Good evening. It is Monday, August 27th at 7:00 PM and I call the Maple Plains City Council Meeting to Order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeLuca, second by Broda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. This evening we will start with a guest speaker, Hennepin County Sheriff Richard Stanek. Can I invite you to the podium?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for having me out here. My name's Rich Stanek. I'm your Hennepin County Sheriff. I get a chance, Madam Mayor, to travel around the county and meet with all the city councils and elected officials and I absolutely enjoy it. I think we're on our 39th, maybe 40th out of the 45 across the county this year. And, you know, it gives us a chance over the next 10 minutes to talk to you a little bit about what we do, mostly in partnership with local law enforcement. Also gives you a chance, if you wish at the end, to have a good conversation with the sheriff and the police chief in the room at the same time about issues that might be important to all of you. And I gotta tell you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, you know, I get a chance to work with your chief all the time. He's, you know, he's good at what he does. He really is. And again, I get a chance to work with 35 others like him. And they all do a pretty good job, but you, you know, hiring internally, keeping it the way you've got it, and the services that the men and women out here in West Hennepin provide to your city and your other contract city is definitely the way to go. I appreciate that as your sheriff. With me tonight, Sergeant Cal McDaniel, works on our community engagement team. He's an all-around good guy. His job is, he's out in the community every day, working on building those relationships, he and his team of, I guess, mostly non-sworn individuals that work countywide, whether it's in Minneapolis or the other cities around the county. And then you've had a chance to meet Samantha Kleinfield. Samantha does our intergovernmental relations. Now, she's a gal that's got a really tough job. You think about two US senators and two US congressmen diametrically opposed, CD III and CD V. You think about 45 sets of city council members ranging from five to 13, 45 mayors, 22 school districts, that's 22 school superintendents, 22 sets of school board members, not the least of which is a met council and a metropolitan airport commission. And then you add on what are 18 Minnesota state senators and 33 Minnesota house members who all comprise some portion thereof of Hennepin County. And it makes my job really easy, so I'm happy to have Sam here tonight. She's gonna help us as we click through this. And I can do this, Madam Mayor, members, in less than 10 minutes, usually, so.
We'll be generous. We usually only give three to guests, but you can have 10.
Oh, okay. We'll see how this goes. Well, here's the four things I want to cover with you, Madam Mayor. I want to tell you a little bit about what we do in our jurisdiction countywide, and then in particularly what we do with West Hennepin public safety. And a little bit about our office and our responsibilities under state law. A little bit about the eight lines of business which comprise a full-service sheriff's office in this country. We're about the 34th largest or so of sheriff's offices across the United States. And then three issues that are important to me, the most important one is the opioid crisis and, of course, a reduction of violent crime. And my background is just like you would imagine. I've been a police officer for 35 years. Some say that's good, some say not so good. 27 different sheriffs here in Hennepin County since 1852. I noticed you were incorporated in 1868, established in 1868, but incorporated in 1912. The three past sheriffs, Ed Ryan, Don Omot, McGowan, took up 70-plus years of service to this county. The strength of an elected sheriff, and we are elected every four years by the residents of this county, is that long-term sustainability. And there are very few things that, you know, after 12 years, I haven't seen. I think most of the police chiefs in this county have turned over at least once, if not twice. Or if you're down in Minneapolis, three or four times, and I'll probably see my fifth before I'm done. But that just talks about the longevity. Public safety's a big place in Hennepin County. Got 1.3 million residents, a couple thousand that live out here in Maple Plain, 550-plus square miles, 104 lakes. I know your city administrator now knows the name of the three rivers that flow through Hennepin County. And if, you know, if I might ask, where do they again?
The Crow River, the Mississippi River, and the Minnesota River.
He's got it. How about the 104 lakes?
Not a chance.
Well, we'll work on that. And then we've got 45 different cities, one unorganized territory, which is down at Fort Snelling. Because you've got the VA hospital, you've got the air and guard bases, you've got, actually, you've got residential housing down there, probably larger than 12 or so other cities in the county. So it continues to grow. And like I said, 36 local police departments, including Chief Crails and myself, the Minnesota State Patrol, nine federal law enforcement agencies, all that have jurisdiction within Hennepin County, depending on what the need is. At the end of the day, you should never care whether you're wearing a dark blue uniform like the chief, or light brown like the sergeant over here, and light blue like Minneapolis, or maroon if you're unfortunate enough to get stopped by the state patrol. Now, either way, you should get seamless public safety services. That's the way we do our business, and that's the way it should be. Our agency is situated, much like your local police department, a chief deputy is our chief of police. He runs the day-to-day operations. We have about 1,100 personnel who work countywide in a number of different locations and facilities. 800 of them are full-time employees, 820 or so. The other 300 or so are volunteers, special deputies like your police reserves. They may serve in our community advisory board, or they may work in our foundation. Our state law governs the powers and duties of an elected sheriff under chapter 387. And under that, you will find seven of the eight lines of business that we provide. The eighth line of business is the crime lab. That is not governed under state law, but is something the county board provides to the residents of this county through the sheriff's office. Eight lines of business look like this. And under each one of these, you'll see in blue the total number of bookings or stats for West Hennepin Public Safety, not broken out by Maple Plain and the other cities, but rather West Hennepin as a whole, because that's their, what we call their ORI number, how we record it. You see 73 bookings in 2017, 39 thus far in 2018. Keep in mind, we book about 33,000 to 40,000 people a year through the front doors of the Hennepin County Jail. Court security, we provide security services for eight different courthouses countywide. Most of you are familiar with the Hennepin County Government Center, where we have, you know, 24 floors in each of the two towers. And then you've got family court on one side of downtown, juvenile court on the other side of downtown, civil court in city hall. You've got three outer division courts at Ridgedale, Brookdale, Southdale, where probably the vast majority of your residents would go if they had some interaction with the 4th Judicial District. All told, about 90 courtrooms and 75-plus judges and referees comprise that 4th Judicial District. The third line of business that's mandated under state law for the sheriff is our patrol division. We provide services countywide. So Sergeant McDaniel has jurisdiction in all 45 cities and the unorganized territory across the county. And we don't do mutual aid agreements with the county, because we can work within Hennepin County, or we can work outside of our county, providing services to the other 86 sheriff's offices across Minnesota. Our warrant and civil process are both mandated under state law. We serve about 30,000 warrants a year, both successful as well as attempts. The same thing with our civil process, orders for protection, foreclosures, whatever it might be, orders from the court or the judges, since we work with the courts as well. Our sixth one is our investigative division. The power of the sheriff's office, working with local law enforcement, is oftentimes crimes of a larger magnitude or a violent crime crosses over jurisdictional boundaries, particularly when you've got a number of cities, like Hennepin County does, you've got 45 cities encompassed in a 1.2, 1.3 population base. And so, the bad guys and bad women cross over jurisdictional boundaries fairly quickly. We can help coordinate resources, crime trends, and others across those jurisdictional boundaries for your local law enforcement, so they can get on top of it immediately. And we tend to focus mostly on the reduction of violent crime. And you'll see at the end, we talk about violent crime a little bit. Our 911 dispatch, we dispatch for local law enforcement out here in your residence. So when your residents call 911, they get Hennepin County Sheriff's dispatch. I remind you that about 80% of our 911 calls come in via cellphone. And you can now text 911. Chief and I, I think the first day came out, we were meeting for coffee, as we do on occasion, and I said, "Hey, text 911." Well, I didn't know they were gonna text us back and say, "What's your emergency?" And we're like, "Well, I don't know. What's my emergency?" And he's like, "I don't know. What's my emergency?" We're just testing the system to see if it works, but it works. And so, if your residents need 911 services and they can't call on the phone for whatever reason, they can text 911 and they'll get the same quick, level service, police, fire, EMS. And we answer about 700,000 911 calls every year. It's a high-volume, high-capacity, high-risk kind of operation. Then our crime lab, I talked about that. They work countywide. We're lucky in Hennepin County, honestly. We, you know, provide crime lab services to the 45 cities in the county, whereas most of the other residents of the state of Minnesota go to the BCA for their services. But when you're up north and you need something, you gotta wait a long time to get crime lab services up there. Here, you know, maybe a 20, 25-minute drive out of Brooklyn Park where they're at John Lloyd House. But honestly, they're on the road every day, two or three of them at a time. So if you need the service, we work at the request of local law enforcement. I will say, wrapping up this piece, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, that people ask me all the time, "Well, what's the difference between, you know, local law enforcement, like the dark blue uniforms you see with West Hennepin on your squad car or on the patch, versus Sergeant McDaniel and the sheriff?" There shouldn't be anything different in terms of what your residents see or how we respond to the different incidents. We know our lines of demarcation, but we defer in the sheriff's office to local autonomy. So if you, as a local elected official, is representing your city, your municipality, we defer to you to decide what level of service you want to provide to your residents in addition to what they already get from the sheriff's office. And, you know, we think that's a good way to go about doing this. If you did not have a West Hennepin Public Safety Agency, you would have the sheriff's office. And, but most cities prefer to have localized police and, you know, squad cars, uniforms. And we're good with that, and that's how we work together day in and day out to provide those services. And then water patrol, you can see how we work, you know, we spend a lot of time on the lakes and the rivers. We've got about a dozen or so full-time personnel, another 35 or so of our special deputies work out on our water patrol. Everywhere in this county, there is open water all the time, you know, every day of the year. Water patrol on July 4th, it was a little cooler out in the morning, nicer in the afternoon, but they stay really, really busy. This year, still, we have not had a drowning the last couple of years out on Lake Minnetaka. Lake Minnetaka, on average, we can only get, you know, 5, 6, 7,000 boats, half of which come from lake owners themselves, cabin owners, residences. The other half come from people who put in at the public launches. It's a very busy place. And I talked about our crime lab. Going to the next one, Samantha. Talk about opioid deaths here before I wrap up. Big thing that we, the sheriff's office gets a chance to do both public safety enforcement, which is our traditional lines of business. We also do public service. So we participate in five or six different nonprofits, whether it's Teen Challenge, Hennepin County Sheriff Foundation, a number of those. But we also do public policy advocacy. So we advocate that local police and fire carry Narcan or naloxone, you know, the antidote reversal. We're happy that police and fire carry it countywide. You can see the number of overdose deaths throughout Hennepin County, 175 alone last year, 153 the year before that, 110 the year before that. And this year, we've seen a slight decline, which is good. But still, 175 people dying in one year. That's three times our homicide rate countywide, just from prescription drug opioid overdose. Unacceptable. And Cal and I spend the better part of our day, about 140 times last year alone, talking to civic groups, Rotary, Lions, and Optimists, everybody in between, not even including the 45 different sets of city councils, to help educate them, to help pique your interest and say, "Thank you for the job you're doing, and there's more to be done on behalf of your residents." And as we do this through a hashtag #NoOverdose, just to play on social media. We partner with the Twins, and the Vikings, and the Timberwolves. We've got those medicine collection drop boxes, those big green oversized things. The last couple of years, we've collected over 150,000 pounds of unused, unwanted, expired prescription meds. All of our deputies carry Narcan. Cal's got one in his pocket. He doesn't leave home without it. Let's see what else you got. National night out, we use drug disposal bags, what we call the pouches. We're gonna get out of the business of these take-back boxes. We think it's better if the residents can do it themselves at their convenience. You can put 10, 20, 30, 40 of these pills in one of these pouches, add a little water, shake it up, throw it in the trash. Environmentally safe. That's a good way to go, rather than your residents having to come to one of our facilities or locations. And then violent crime, at the end of the day, we're fortunate in this county, we only focus on guns, gangs, kids, and drugs from a sheriff's perspective. We know that the chief's got a lot of other things to worry about, car crashes, and property damage, and theft. It will help, but we focus on the reduction of violent crime, narcotics, gangs, guns. And over the last 11 years, almost 12 years, we've had about a 26% reduction in violent crime in this county. That's a good thing. And we're gonna continue that trend working with our local law enforcement partners. Well, that's it, Madam Mayor. I did take nine minutes and 40 seconds, and I tried, but...
Hey, I didn't even keep track.
I did. So, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions or not. Like I said, we just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're doing. I want to tell you what a pleasure it is to be able to work with Chief Crails and the men and women out here. You guys do things the right way for the right reason, and I appreciate that.
I do have one question that I just heard today, is that you're talking about getting rid of the collection boxes and just going to the pouches. Will residents, citizens, will they be paying for the pouches themselves, and where will they get those? Because I personally use the collection box all the time. It's convenient. I know where it is. When the prescription's done, my son just had his wisdom teeth out. Go get rid of it.
Yeah, that's a great question, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So here's the quick answer. Now, I would, you know, if I had my way, every time you got a prescription from Walgreens, CVS, or wherever your favorite pharmacy is, that they would provide one of these pouches to you. Two, I would prefer that they would just do this at their pharmacies themselves, but many of the pharmacies won't do this. Now, how law enforcement got into it, because if we had not done it, these numbers would be even higher than what they are, and that was unacceptable to the chief and myself and the other police chiefs in this county. And so, as we transition out, we will continue to provide these bags. In fact, if you go into, you don't have a box at your office, do you?
We do not, no.
So I'll just say the closest one is probably maybe Water Patrol, not far from here up on County Road 15. If you walk in the front lobby, you'll see that big green collection box. But you'll also see a nice big rack with about 100 or so of these drug disposal pouches. You can bring your expired meds in, drop it into the box, take a couple bags home, so you don't have to keep coming back to Water Patrol every time you want to get rid of these. And we had about 20,000 of these given to us or provided to us through drug forfeiture funds through our Hennepin County Sheriff Foundation.
Aren't there, isn't there a substantial cost for a bag?
Yeah, you know, he was asking me earlier today, these bags run about $4 a piece. We buy them for about $2.50, $2.60 a piece. It's a local company here in Eden Prairie. They've been very generous, but they're also profit motivated. We're gonna continue to do the right thing for residents, and if, you know, we can continue to raise money to do this, we will do so. County board, county commissioners, you have Commissioner Johnson out here. You know, he's talked about this previously, and depending what happens with him the next month or two, I would hope that the county board would invest in this and provide this for their cities or another outlet. But in the meantime, the sheriff's office pays for them. Your tax dollars, because we're funded with property tax, business tax through the county.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And thank you for using the drop boxes, right? I mean, it's a big deal. And, like I said, 150,000-plus pounds. We stopped counting after a while, because there's just so much of it. Every night, every night, that one at Water Patrol, is that where you go?
Mm-hmm.
It's full. Every night, our watch command empties that thing out 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, and it's full. And then we incinerate them about once a month or so.
Any other questions or comments? I know you also mentioned, you talked about the mutual working relationship in the sheriff assisting West Hennepin. Has West Hennepin, and maybe this is more for our director, have you ever assisted the sheriff, your department, or...
Yes, we do, through our mutual aid agreement, assist the sheriff primarily in Greenfield and Rockford. So they do have a patrol division that is assigned to Greenfield and Rockford area. So we do assist them as well in that area.
That's important, those mutual relationships.
So, I mean, if you had, Madam Mayor, members, if you had a crash out on the highway, if you had some emergent incident, maybe a fire, you'll see our special deputies, you'll see them at your civic events. But we, you know, law enforcement in this county is pretty fortunate, because we work together all the time. We've got a great working relationship. Our job is to continue to provide the backdrop and the support for local law enforcement, but allow you, as elected officials representing your city, but they're also residents of the county in which I'm an elected official. And between the two, we gotta figure out how to do this. And we're lucky we've got partners like Gary and others that do it the right way. And that's good. Remember, in other parts of the state, it's not like that. I mean, when you get out to greater Minnesota, either southern or western or northern parts of Minnesota, it's primarily the sheriff's office, and then maybe one or two smaller cities, unless you're up in Duluth or Rochester, or over in St. Cloud. We are very much decentralized, but we have a lot of assets and resources for local law enforcement to draw on as well. So we look at it as value-added.
It is. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments for the sheriff? All right. Well, thank you for coming out tonight for your presentation.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I left you a couple gifts as well. Take a look at when you get a chance. It just kinda lays out what I talked to you about, and I appreciate your service. Thank you. Chief, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Our next item of business this evening is the consent agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve those as written. So moved? Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. I did have one item, but it goes with the consent agenda. It goes towards accounts payable, but I wanted to approve this month, so we can move forward. I've been noticing a pattern with shop materials, in particular since April and August. April, our low being $419 and some change, and in August being over $1,500. We're averaging about $941 a month in shop materials. And I'm wondering, Bobby, if you can do some research on that, because I'm not sure what that means, because it does not include chemicals, building repairs, landscaping materials, fuels, blue books, batteries, bulbs, rentals, utility maintenance supplies.
Sure. Yeah, I can get some information on that, and then I'll send an email out to all council, burning shop materials.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that. The next item of business this evening is our administrative reports, and I'm looking for a motion to approve those as written and submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion? Chief, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. New business this evening, resolution 18-0827-01. A resolution canceling the special assessment for 5815, Main Street West. And I'm gonna turn that over to our administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I was hoping I wouldn't have to come back with one of these resolutions, but turns out, last year in August, there was a mishap where a assessment was paid in full. And the result of that was that it did not get processed to a complete level with the county. And as a result, we do need to remove that assessment from there, as well as refund the difference from what they've paid within the last year of that being on their taxes. So that's what this resolution is for, is to remove the assessment on there. This is oversight correctional error, and that's simply it. So we're happy when our residents pay their assessments in full, so we want to continue to make sure that that is noted, so they don't have that biannual, or I'm sorry, twice-a-year payment there, so.
I will move that we approve resolution 18-0827-01. Looking for a second.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Broda, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
The ayes have it, 5 to 0.
Thank you. Our next item of business is resolution 18-0827-02. A resolution partially waiving a 2014 special stormwater assessment for 2015 Bud Street North and the Marshland Properties.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This property has been discussed multiple times in the past. You'll find in your packet, there was a stormwater agreement that was worked out between our city attorney at the time and Marshland Properties, which owns a piece of property just north of where Proto Labs is currently located. It's a property that has no building, no land available for building. It's consistent of a drainage pond. And in 2014, the city reached an agreement with this landowner to charge him. You can make note of this on, under now therefore, bullet point three, which states, "Commencing in 2014, Marshland agrees to pay $312 per year and as and for the stormwater charges for subject property." So with that being said, we found that stormwater charges did not reflect the $312 per year in 2014. And so here we are now, trying to remove some of those late fees and penalties that were wrongfully applied to this property at that time. So this resolution here states to waive $1,852.03 of stormwater assessments for the year of 2014 to be removed from Marshland Properties with a PID number in there, address 2015 Bud Street North. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yep.
Did the resident pay the $312 in 2014 and ignore the rest, or did they not pay anything?
No, they didn't pay anything. No payments were made at all.
So normally, would we assess a late fee on that $312 if they hadn't paid it?
Normally, yes, but due to the fact that this was incorrectly applied on the city's half as well, I can understand the hesitancy to pay any of it. So if you're charged a wrong bill from Verizon, or from whoever, Excel, you don't pay the part that you think is right. You wait till it's corrected, and then you pay it. That was kind of the mentality that staff took here as well, is that we should correct this as a community member and as a landowner, should correct this in its entirety to reflect that. Good question.
Had they contacted the city earlier than this year about it?
Yeah, this has been an ongoing discussion for quite a long time. It took a long time to get to the bottom of this.
I just want to make sure there's been some communication, not just ignoring it, so...
Yeah, this has been really ongoing for quite some time.
The property owner is aware that this resolution is before the city council tonight?
The property owner wants, is aware of the agreement, is aware of this conversation going forward, and is not, I haven't reached out to him about this. He's just specifically said, "You need to find that agreement and make this right," and that's what we're doing here tonight.
What happened to the assessments in 2015, 16, and 17?
They should be correct. Yeah, there's nothing in there saying that that's incorrect.
Were they paid?
I'm not sure. The reason why this is before the city at this point right now is that this property will foreclose if it's not taken care of. And we're on a deadline of September 1st, and that's why this resolution is here at this time. Considering the city did find this agreement, we found this to be appropriate on staff's level to bring this resolution in front of city council.
But he hasn't paid the 2014 assessment.
He hasn't paid any of it.
And we don't know whether 15, 16, and 17 have been paid.
I don't know. No, I don't. Considering the only year that this resolution is addressing is 2014, and there's been error on that, I would, I'd say, at this moment in time, I move we approve this resolution as written to take care of that 2014 year.
There's a motion to approve resolution 18-0827-02. Looking for a second? I'll second that, so we can continue discussion. Any further discussion? I would just like to note that we follow up to make sure that...
Yeah, well, absolutely. Yeah, and that may be the case. I mean, the reality is, is that if this wasn't applied, this agreement at all, then we're gonna have to waive and take care of the years that were incorrectly calculated. But, I mean, the reality is, is that this agreement was with our city attorney and not with the city. So this is an agreement that I just was able to get my hands on last week. And we're trying to make this right. So we've had a disgruntled property owner, and we're trying to remedy, you know, live up to our word of what we agreed upon.
Yeah, it's clearly stated with signatures from both the city representative and the landowner, that the charge for that year should be $312, and it's clearly not. Now, whether or not there's late fees... Now, whether or not there's late fees assessed to that year and others, that's a separate matter in my mind.
Mm-hmm.
You could certainly still charge late fees, but that, I don't think is tied to this resolution, so that's why, clear cut matter in my mind.
Any further discussion or comments? All right, so with that, we are voting on resolution dash zero eight two seven zero two, which is waiving the twenty fourteen special stormwater assessment.
Partial.
Partial.
It's waiving one thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars.
That's an important word.
And three cents, correct, partial, not only.
For twenty fifteen Bud Street North and the Marshland Properties. All in favor?
Does it have to be a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskuski.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
Thank you. Last item of business this evening is council reports and other business, and why don't we start with Councilmember DeLuca?
I don't have any reports, we are meeting tomorrow morning, however, with the police commission to try to finalize the budget. We'll be bringing a proposed budget from Gary to the next workshop to discuss.
Thank you. Councilmember Broda.
Well, didn't have the movie on Friday, but we're going to try again on Thursday this week, so eight o'clock at Northside Park, we're going to see the movie Sing, and we'll have popcorn and refreshments there for you.
All right. Councilmember Cahill.
I would just note that it was great seeing everyone at community dinner, and seeing all the community members that came out, and our police and fire who showed up as well, the kids love the vehicles, and everyone loves meeting you, so it was a great event.
Well, I continue to represent the city with the mayor at the Orno Rotary. I joined all of you on United Unite, I think we served in excess of two hundred pulled pork sandwiches, and it was quite a civic event, I really enjoyed it. And attended watershed last Thursday, where we got the results of our PrAP review, which is a performance, an analysis, performance review from Board of Water Soil Resources, state agency, and it was pretty good. So, kudos to the six-member cities and what we do in the watershed, we got thumbs up on our PrAP review.
Wonderful. I was able to attend the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce, and we welcomed the Orno School Board to our meeting, and they were our speakers, so they gave us the update on construction and the activity center, so there will be opportunities for our residents there as well when that's done, so keep your eyes posted, and you can go to their website and check things out. A special thanks to Mayor Marvin Johnson and Independence, he invited me to be a guest at the National League of Cities Small Cities Conference, and learned a lot, built some neat relationships, and Chief was there as well, so it was a unique experience, and really enjoyed being a part of that National League of Cities Small Cities Conference. And also, just wanted to mention, hopefully you've all been reading the newspapers, the Star and Tribune locally, and in the newspaper, but all of our police officers are now equipped with a weapon-mounted camera, so I think anytime we can give our officers another tool, and their tool belt, to do their job well, and, you know, we always hope and pray we never have to use them, but it's there, so we are grateful for that, and just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that as well. So, all right, well, looking forward to September and next month, and hopefully see you all at the movie, weather permitting. Do we have any visitors to be heard?